I would like to call the meeting to order. This is the City Commission, and today is Wednesday, March the 4th. Good evening, I'm Alice Norris, the mayor.
Good evening, Daphne West, Commissioner President.
James Nacita, City Commissioner.
Doug Neely, City Commissioner.
Rocky Smith, Commissioner.
Would you please stand and join me in the flag salute.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand in that organization under God, to the invisible, liberal, good government of our own, under God.
As you look around our commission chambers this evening, you'll see that we have something a little unusual. I think we have the entire police department here, and that's because we have a great honor, and that is that tonight I get to swear in our new police chief and public safety director. And I think because we work as a team in the city, it would be very appropriate to have our chief-elect, I guess he still is, to come forward, and I think it would be very appropriate to have the department gather around while we administer the oath of office. So if you would all come forward, please. Why don't you just gather right up here, because the television cameras point this way. You can, there can be some more over here. You're not going to get on television, stay over there. So, okay, Mike, you move forward, here, chief, sorry. And then why don't you make a second row? Why don't you come on over, because you're not, you're not right around in. Your television fans will not be able to recognize you if you don't come on over. Yep, watch over here. Keep moving in. It's just not very often that we get to see the police department together like this, and I think it's a good opportunity. We have a flag time here. Come on in. There's your spot, right there, sir. Come on in. Here's your spot, right there, sir. All right, up here, right there you go. Again, this is the first time that I've gotten to administer the oath of office to a police chief, and it is my pleasure tonight to administer it to you. So with that, please say aye and state your name.
Aye, Commissioner.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the law and support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the department's rules and regulations.
And the department's rules and regulations.
While faithfully performing my duties.
While faithfully performing my duties.
As chief of police.
As chief of police.
And public safety director.
And public safety director.
For Oregon City, Oregon.
For Oregon City, Oregon.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, you know, if this ceremony had taken place in Arkansas, we'd be legally married now, so. No, I'd just like to thank the City Commission, Mr. Patterson, for, and the citizens of Oregon City for the honor of making me the police chief. It's truly an honor, and I'm very humbled by the, by the experience. I promise I won't be too long-winded, I don't want anybody to mistake me for a City Commissioner.
Sir, please remember who you work for.
But, a couple of people, I'd like to introduce, my mother and father, Donna and Margaret Conrad. Please stand up. And they're going to hate me for this, but my two sons, Jake and Matthew. And, you know, I like to say that the biggest privilege for me is not being the police chief, but actually having the opportunity to be with this fine group of men and women. I don't think the people in Oregon City know how blessed they are to have this caliber
that is to talk about the census in 2010.
of people working for them. And it's very humbling, and I'm very honored.
And we have, from the U.S. Census Bureau tonight, John Chisholm.
There's an old saying that I'd rather live one day with lions than a thousand days with
Welcome, John.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and commissioners for putting the census
lambs. And I'm really, really fortunate that I live every day with lions. Thank you.
Okay, chief, now get to work.
on the agenda tonight. I'll be brief. Most everyone knows that the census is completed every 10 years, and it's coming up again in 2010. The census is something that is actually required by the U.S. Constitution, and it started in 1790, and it's been done every 10 years since then. Some know the importance of the census. The census helps determine the congressional district's apportionment. There's also funding that comes from the federal government. About $3 billion each year comes to cities and counties and the states, and that money is used for a lot of different purposes, but it's used for something, well, transportation, social services, the WIC program, for example, the elderly programs. It's also used for empowerment zones as well. So it is a benefit to the city and the county to do that. The census each year actually hires also thousands of people throughout the United States for the census. Coming up in April and May, there'll probably be about 900 census workers here in the area doing what we call address canvassing, and that will be to actually verify all the addresses that we have from the postal service. The other thing that we're also concerned about is trying to make sure that we reach everyone to be counted in the census, and that means everyone who is residing in the United States at the time of the census. The census will be conducted beginning April 1st, 2010, and hopefully everyone will return their questionnaires. If they don't, there'll be someone out knocking on their doors. So hopefully, to reduce the number of follow-ups that's needed, what we like to do is to raise awareness about the census and to try to make sure we reach everyone. In doing so, we actually look for support from county governments and city governments as well. And we ask city governments and county governments to actually develop what we call a complete count committee, and hopefully that committee will help raise awareness about the census and help us reach all of the individuals residing in those cities and counties at the time of the census. We also would like the cities and counties to provide us with a resolution supporting the census, which we can share with partners throughout the community indicating the importance of the census, because there is a resolution as provided. So, in hopes of just being brief, I just want to make sure that it's clear that what we're asking tonight is to have the city commissioners consider developing a complete count committee, which staff, like myself, partnership staff, will actually help, help develop and help train, and to also issue a proclamation supporting the census. And right now, I wouldn't entertain any questions that anyone might have.
Commissioner West?
Yes.
I, since I wasn't here 10 years ago, and I've never served on a committee like this, is it a volunteer committee? And how many people are you looking for? And what's the time range that you think that this will all be taking place?
The number of people is really up to the city or county. It's based on what you think might be needed to reach out to the community. And it is, it could be a volunteer committee, it might be staffed by someone from the city, but it is a volunteer committee, and it's really up to the commission to make that decision.
Going door-to-door, knocking on doors, or only after a certain time point when these surveys aren't returned?
Actually, the complete count committee does not do that. The complete count committee is only responsible for promoting the awareness of the census. So, for example, it might decide to, at the county fair, have a booth, and it also might decide to have someone on the commission be a spokesperson on the radio or TV. But there's a lot of different things that can be done to raise awareness about the census, but the volunteers will not be going out knocking on doors.
I'm glad I asked.
Commissioner.
It sounds like something that Willamette Falls Cable TV could maybe help us with, too.
Commissioner Neely.
I'm sure I'm not alone, but I just recently got a survey, and I believe it's through the Department of Commerce that's to be filled out. Is that coordinated with you, or is that independent of the Census Bureau?
Actually, it might have been something called the American Community Survey.
Yes.
And after 2010, if there is time, in 2010, there were actually, oh, I'm sorry, in 2000, there were two surveys that were done during the census. One was a short form, which is about 10 to 12 questions, another was a long form. And what's been done since 2000, they've eliminated the long form. So in 2010, there will be just a 10-question form. But since that time, they've been doing the, something called the American Community Survey. And that's been done to provide updated projections. It is a survey, so it's not exact. It's a sample of people in a particular area. So that's probably what.
And it is for your bureau? It is for the census?
Yes, the, through the Department of Commerce, the census actually conducts the American Community Survey.
Okay.
I've been getting a lot of materials from the census, and I noticed that you're sending 900 workers here to check addresses, and I understand that that's done through satellite or GPS?
The individuals who'll be doing that will have handheld computers, and all the information that they collect on a daily basis will be uploaded, so.
Yeah, I thought that was pretty high-tech. Any other questions from the commission? Oh, cost, yes, or, yes, are the workers paid? Is there an incentive for employment or for volunteers?
You mean?
The people who actually do the work. Are you adding, do you need, do you need people to work for you?
At this point, all of the positions for the individuals who'll be doing the address canvassing, well, I should say, all the applicants, we do have more applicants than we actually need at this point, who'll be doing the census, well, doing the address canvassing, but there'll be another round of hiring for the actual enumerators who will follow up with the census.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much, I appreciate.
Well, just one other item. I do have information for all of the commissioners and the recorder. Nancy Ivey asked me if I would bring at least six, six of them, but also if there was someone I could maintain communications with in terms of following up and so forth.
I think that'd be great. We'll get our city recorder to be on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we were to have a report from our fire district, but I don't see, don't see them here, so we'll hold that over. Our sesquicentennial moment this evening is a time, because we're celebrating our 150th birthday in Oregon, just to talk about little tidbits of history in Oregon City. Today is, did you know that Oregon City actually has two, well, relationships with other cities? One is the Sister City Program that we've had for almost 40 years. I think it's 39 this year? Not actually sure of that, I forgot to check. But that is with Tadashina, Japan, and they come, a delegation comes every, nearly every year from, from Japan to see the sights of Oregon City, learn about our history, which to them, of course, is very new and very young, and that's been a really strong relationship. We also have a rather newly-established relationship, I think it's only four years old, we have a friendship city relationship with Maui County, which has a mayor. The islands of Hawaii have, actually, there's three islands that make up the county of Maui. And I had an opportunity to have dinner with the mayor of Maui and gave her a, our 150 Things to Do in Oregon City. She graduated from Merrill Hurst, so she's rather familiar with Blackmanus County, but we, it was to be a tourism-related friendship and exchange of idea friendship, and so we did a lot of that over dinner and had a good time. So, that's your tidbit for the sesquicentennial moment. Next, let's move into citizen comment, and I have two people who've signed up on cards to speak to us this evening. Please come forward. Claire Metz, you can be first, followed by Kevin Hunt. When you come up, please give us your name and the city in which you reside, and then you may speak to us for up to three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Claire Metz, I live here in Oregon City. I am the event coordinator for the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce, which I know you all know. And I'm here tonight to invite the Oregon City Commission, as well as the public at large, to two chamber events that are coming up in March. The first is our sixth annual Irish Stew Cook-Off on St. Patrick's Day, of course, on March 17th, at Hagan's Food and Pharmacy. The chamber, it's a chamber after hours, and it's from 5:30 to 7:30, and is open to the public. It's not just a chamber event. Tasters can purchase spoons for $5 to taste and then vote on their favorite stew, and we, at this point, have 15 different applicants, including Daphne West, one of our city commissioners, and the color-green bribery, and lots of fun run rampant at this event. It is a lot of fun. And Hagan's is providing free beef and potatoes, which they have in the past, and this year we have a new thing, Sudan Farms in Cambie, which is a lamb producer, is offering lamb, because according to him, a true Irish stew is lamb. So that's an option that the chefs can have. The second is somewhat new to the, for the, a new event for the chamber. In the past, several of our different city service clubs and our school district have presented their annual awards to, at the annual dinner. And this year, we're devoting a special event to recognize all that these service clubs do to, in our community, to make it a better place to live, work, and play. So the Oregon City Service Clubs giving awards this year will be Kiwanis, The Lions, Optimist, Rotary, and the Soroptimists. The chamber will be hosting the lunch on Wednesday, March 18th, at, in the Tom Water Room at the Museum of the Oregon Territory from 11:30 to 1:00. And the lunch will be catered by our own Willamette Falls Hospital Catering Department. And the lunch is $15, you can pay at the door. We encourage the members of the community, if you're interested in finding out about the different service clubs and what they do to make our community what it is, and if you'd be interested in other projects and stuff, so we do encourage everybody to come. And for any information, just call the chamber. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kevin Hunt?
Good evening, my name's Kevin Hunt, I live at 1145 Sunny Lane in Oregon City, and it's a little bit awkward, but I have to just make the comment anyway, because I distributed some correspondence earlier tonight, and there was an unfortunate error on my part in which two lines at the bottom of page one and top of page two got deleted, and so the, part of the letter doesn't make any sense unless I make a comment, so here's my comment. I just wanted to correct something for the people who watch the local access television and/or watch the live streaming internet presentations of these meetings, because at the conclusion of the last meeting, after I testified, I had to leave, and, and so I wasn't here after that. And a few days later, while watching the meeting on television, I noted that a commissioner, after I left, stated on the record, and of course, this was broadcast throughout the community, that the commission had a difficult time remaining objective on the matter I was interested in, because I had made false statements to the commission. Now, I'm here to just let the people of Oregon City know that that's not true, that I did not make false statements to the commission. What, what occurred here is that on the 4th of February, the city attorney Sullivan, in quite honest mistake, stated that I had a case pending in the city municipal court that involved your vehicle inventory policy. That's not correct. I don't have a case pending, I didn't have at the time, I don't now, and I haven't had no cases anywhere in any court dealing with the inventory policy, except for one, which I gave you the court order that resulted from that case declaring the inventory policy invalid. And that was over, well over a year ago. After I made, so I made that correction, and then apparently, due to misreading of the first legal memorandum that I submitted to the commission, this commissioner then stated that that memorandum had contradicted my earlier denial, and so therefore I had been making, I had made false statements. And the memorandum in no way contradicted what I said on the 4th of February. The memorandum, the memorandum in no way contradicted that. The fact remains, it remains stated therein, and it remains true today, that I have not had, do not have, any case pending dealing with the Oregon City inventory policy. And as you will note also, in the first of the two legal memoranda, as a goodwill gesture to the city, I indicated that I would withdraw any current claims or toward claim notices predicated upon that inventory policy or anyone that you adopt, to the extent that I was involved in any drafting of it. However, inasmuch as the commission has rejected every single one of my proposed amendments now, I guess if the right client comes along, we'll just have to deal with it then. But I just wanted to be sure that that was all corrected, because a lawyer's reputation for honesty and truthfulness is his stock in trade, and when an elected official impunes that and is broadcast throughout the community, it can be very damaging. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I was that, I was that, Commissioner. Mr. Hunt was kind enough to call me up to indicate that he would be here, and I appreciate that. I am sorry for the misunderstanding, and apparently, assembly and apology.
And it's accepted, and I, and as I noted in my phone call, and I'd like people to know that I've supported and admired Commissioner Neely for a long time, and I'm not here out of anger.
Thank you.
Just clarification, thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Next, as we look at the agenda, are there any particular items that anyone wishes to have reordered? Okay, we'll take, oh, yes, Commissioner Nacita.
I did want to bring up, if this is the appropriate time, the request by Mr. Edgar to appeal the Cove Land use decision.
How about, you want to do that under Communications? Let's do that under Commissioner Communications. I'll do that.
If that's an appropriate place, sure.
Sure. Making a note here, so I won't forget. Okay, then let's move on to the business agenda. First is a public hearing on the Transportation System Plan Amendment, continued from the January 21st City Commission meeting. Mr. Vantlau?
Yes, this is a proposed change to our TSP that was initiated as a part of the Rivers Project. The Rivers Project application has expired, so we're recommending that this, this action be withdrawn from your consideration.
May I have a motion for acceptance, please?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Smith, on the, the motion to withdraw the application. Is there discussion or comment? Seeing none, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Next, on the consent agenda, may I have a motion for adoption, please?
Move approval.
A second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioners Nacita. For the consent agenda, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Under general business, we do have an item that we, during our work session prior to the commission meeting, interviewed applicants at the Chamber of Commerce, had forwarded for consideration for the Chamber of Commerce slot on the Urban Renewal Commission. We conducted interviews of three individuals, Shelley Gale, Karen Maury, and Graham Peterson. And so we have an opportunity this evening to make a selection or take action on this, after those interviews. So commissioners, Commissioner Neely?
Well, I'm going to make this point, I don't know it has to delay anything. The previous time we had a, an election of a representative from the chamber, the chamber actually gave us a priority ranking of their preferences in terms of those that were submitted. We don't have that before us. I did call Amber Hovek, CEO of the chamber, and she indicated that she, the board president and also the chair of their government, Government Affairs Committee, had actually done a ranking. And I, but it's not formally before us, so I'm not sure how you want to handle that.
I think, I guess how I would view that is that if the chamber wanted us to consider a sole candidate, one would have been forwarded. Because three were forwarded, I, I would posit that it's our discretion and that we may make a selection of any of, of the three. So I would be ready, ready to do that this evening, if, if the rest of you are. Is there a proposal to nominate one of the three interviewees?
I would move that Graham Peterson, the designated individual to represent the chamber.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner West, to forward, to forward the name of Graham Peterson to the Urban, for the Urban Renewal Commission slot. Is there discussion or, or comment? Go ahead, Commissioner West.
It's never an easy decision putting, picking people for commissions, because there's so many good people that, and different skills and abilities and talents that have applied to be on this commission. And so it's really difficult to narrow it down to one, and hopefully can find other committees for these other people to serve on. So with that, I'd like to thank all the candidates for interviewing today, it was very nice.
Three very good candidates.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Smith?
I agree with Commissioner West, very strong, all three candidates, and I just was re-looking through notes that I wrote down on various answers, and I think either, I mean, I think any of the three are extremely strong and, and very supportive of the things that are happening in Oregon City, and it's just nice to see that there's an interest out there among a variety of people that really want to be a part of making decisions, and so I appreciate that. And this is not an easy decision. I still don't know that I've decided. I'm going to think about it.
Let's see, which order are you voting?
Yeah, exactly.
Commissioner Nacita?
I echo the sentiment, and I'd just like to say that if, if someone is not selected tonight, I would really encourage those individuals to apply for another volunteer commission, because we're in need. There's an old saying by Woody Allen, that 90% of life is just showing up, and.
You know, we want more than that.
I'm just, I'm just relaying the experience that I had as an applicant for Historic Review Board, where I was the only one showing up for it. And so we have commissions that are begging for people to come and participate in the city, and it's, it's very, very nice to have a competitive pool. It's, but we have, we have many commissions where often we have one or no candidate, and I just encourage not only these candidates, but the whole community to show up.
Great, thank you. Okay, Nancy, please pull the commission.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner?
happening in Oregon City, and it's just nice to see that there's an interest out there among a variety of people that really want to be a part of making decisions, and so I appreciate that. And this is not an easy decision. I still don't know that I've decided. I'm gonna think about it.
Let's see, which order are you voting?
Yeah, exactly.
Commissioner Nacita.
I echo the sentiment, and I'd just like to say that if, if someone is not selected tonight, I would really encourage those individuals to apply for another volunteer commission, because we're in need. There's an old saying by Woody Allen, that ninety percent of life is just showing up, and.
You know, we want more than that.
I'm just, I'm just relaying the experience that I had as an applicant for Historic Review Board, where I was the only one showing up for it. And so we have commissions that are begging for people to come and participate in the city, and it's, it's very, very nice to have a competitive pool. It's, but we have, we have many commissions where often we have one or no candidate, and I just encourage not only these candidates, but the whole community to show up.
Great, thank you. Okay, Nancy, please pull the commission.
Commissioner Nacita.
Aye.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye. Motion approved unanimously to nominate, to, to select Graham Peterson as our new Urban Renewal Commissioner. Since the Chamber of Commerce is here, you know that. Okay. Oh, and Graham is, Graham is not here. That's right, just showing up, that's, look where you've started.
Karen would get a hundred and ten if that was the case.
Well, everybody will realize, in my case, the other ten percent is showing up on time.
Yeah, we'll hold you to that. All right, moving into Comis, into Communications, first we'll start with our city manager, Mr. Patterson.
Mayor, remember, we just have one item this evening, and which may have some bearing as you take up the issue under Commissioner's report this evening, but has probably more bearing on our work session tomorrow evening, as we talk about some possible ways to address a couple of issues. And we'll tell you, this has not been the most positive of days, but we are beginning to get our first look at the budget. I know David's seen it much more than I have, but, and there are some trends here that I think you'll want to begin to, to think about, particularly as we move to tomorrow night and towards the budget hearings. As I outlined at our last work session, what the parameters were for the fire annexation program, there are a couple of those that have dramatically changed. The city's assessed value growth is only at four and a half percent this year, and so that's, again, the plan was based on a five and a half percent AV growth. And again, we've been running at six and a quarter, so that's, you're gonna see a little less revenue in regards of, of tax receipts. I think I've visited with you before about the contingency spending, and depending on how that settles out, looks like we're gonna spend about six or eight hundred thousand dollars from contingency this year on those things that I've listed for you before. Still with contingency, we're gonna have a, a good working capital carryover, probably in the 2.4 million range, and again, when you think about, we were flying at thirty-four thousand at one time, that's, that's still better than where we've been. But it does mean, with what's happening here, we've got to begin to look at that long-range forecast. Probably more concerning is what's happening in community development. I've talked to you about community development, community development spending for some time. We had anticipated a continue, or a subsidy this year, 252,000. Looks like we're gonna have to spend another 243,000, bringing that total to 495,000 for this year. That's the good news. Next year, we're looking at 902,000. So with some of the things that I was gonna visit with you tomorrow night, which I will, solving part of the issue, but now bringing that type of continuing escalating trend of community development into the general fund, which is the only place it can go, is really gonna limit your ability to look at new initiatives. And as I say, I haven't had a chance to really look at the budget and work through it, I can tell you what my approach is. I don't really like the approach you see some agencies take of, of cutting a flat rate across the board, because I really don't think that really makes a lot of sense, but others may see it different. Mainly because what happens in a situation like that, you end up trimming programs that you, that you end up still keeping, but it makes it very difficult to make them work. I think what's, what's probably a sounder approach is really look at what services or programs that you just eliminate through that, because again, my personal opinion, I'd rather do some things very good than do a bunch of things poorly, and that's kind of what happens when you just kind of start doing across-the-board types of cuts. This does, does not bode well for any new initiatives that you want to take, and that's something you'll be talking as you look at your goals, but, and again, how we stop the trending of this escalation in community development is important. That's the one issue, as I've said before, very difficult, difficult to control. I think when you look at planning issues, such as tree ordinances, when you look at new initiatives such as urban rural reserves, local aspirations, you're really gonna have to look at what does that mean in terms of commitment and spending. I definitely think something like a south end concept plan really has to be pushed back until we kind of figure out a solution for that. But anyhow, I'll have more information as we get into the budget, and again, tomorrow night when we talk about things, you'll kind of see how this plays in, but I think you need to keep that in mind. Also, when you begin to look at waivers of fees, and I would argue, as I've always argued, there is no such thing, somebody pays, it's a question of who. I think you're really gonna have to look at, do you want to continue to increase this subsidy? Because it is, it is growing at an astronomical rate. I had anticipated we would be there, but I had the 900 range out about three years before we began to hit that, and it looks like it's gonna be next year. Now again, some things could happen, particularly if we could, if the economy strengthens and you begin to see some building here in the next few years, you know, it may correct that, so it's not time to panic, but I do think we have to start thinking about the adjustments that are gonna need to be made, if we're gonna stay within the plan we have with this type of expenditure. So that's all I have to.
Well, thank you for the insightful preview. Next, I have some appointments to announce, the reappointment of Wendell Baskins to the Oregon City Civic Improvement Trust, and a reappointment of Mike Cottle to the Budget Committee. And the Historic Review Board has forwarded the name of Cindy Toll to be appointed to the Historic Review Board. I don't believe we had those applications in our packet. Could you forward those applications to the commission so they can see those?
We have, we have one.
Were they?
I have two Cindys.
Oh, I didn't see, oh, it was here tonight?
Yeah, I saw it.
Oh, Wendell's is here. Yes, the Budget Committee actually didn't come forward, I think, but David.
I wasn't aware, yeah.
Yeah, David Wimmer will have that, so, no, I just added that because.
I traded Cindy for a Wendell.
We didn't have, okay.
We only have one Wendell.
Just kidding, Cindy. I have two Cindys.
Okay, and then the only other thing I have under announcements and communications from me is that, as I hope you know, I am going on our behalf on the J-PAC trip, the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation, with the rest of the regional transportation leaders, to Washington DC to talk to Congress, and the materials put out by Triment and Metro are very, very good. They're succinct and visual analyses of the reasons that we need these transportation initiatives in the region. So I have these for you to look at. This big book is the detail behind the proposals here, so if anyone wants to look at them, you certainly may. And with that, are there other committee reports, or Commissioner Nacita, do you want to go ahead with, okay, give your reports first? Commissioner Neely.
A couple. One is the, I serve on the Urban Reserve, Reserve Policy Advisory Committee, the County Commission. The process has come that we have identified potential candidate areas for rural reserves to advise, to give advice on, and potential, potential candidate areas for urban. We aren't finished, because some of those boundaries actually cross each other. But I did want to indicate the areas that have been identified in the Oregon City area. One is along our southern fringe, south end, Central Point. The other is an area that's generally referred to as Clack, as, I don't want to say Clackamas Heights, that's not what it is. Yeah, it is, it is Clackamas Heights. The area extending up Holcomb, up to probably Bradley. But it extends on.
That's beyond, yeah.
And that's beyond, and it actually extends up through the, across Redland Road, it's a hash area that extends into the area of, of Maple Lane and Thayer Road, all the way down to almost where they come into Ferguson, and come into the, to the area of Redland Road. These are broad pictures, they're not, they're, they're, they're the candidate areas that are being discussed. The one thing that concerns me the greatest, though, is these have been identified basically based upon water and sewer serviceability areas. If, I think if we put a topographical overlay on these areas, we find that many of these areas are not suitable at all for urban development, and it's an area that we need to look at very, very closely.
These were identified as urban reserves.
Urban reserves.
Urban, oh.
Urban reserves, urban, urban reserves. Sorry if I misspoke on that one.
No, no, you just didn't.
Yeah. And so these are, these are the areas, of course, of greatest concern to us. I've made that request several times, to have these map overlays with, with the, basically with the contour overlays and so forth shown. I don't know if the county has the kind of GIS staff capabilities that the city does, but it's something that we might look at. I have made a request that the two large maps that they have produced that show the areas that we have identified be made available to us, and I would make a request from the city manager that we have a focused study session on it. Not only for that purpose, but we have several of the Clackamas County cities have put in their vision as to what they want in terms of where they want to be and how they want to grow. We haven't had that discussion, and I would like a dedicated study session to, to that, to that point. The other thing I want to talk was about the impact meetings. The mayor wasn't able to attend because she was obviously engaged in far more important things, and so she designated, she designated me to attend. It was, it was a rather interesting presentation, because they were talking about job, job and economic forecast, and, and there was actually a report given, well, you can imagine that nothing, nothing discussed was solved. But what was interesting to me, I had the opportunity of serving as an impact representative for several years, and how the dialogue and, and who has the dialogue about these issues has not changed at all in that period of time. You had the mayor of Beaverton, who was a new mayor, saying essentially the same things that the old mayor of Beaverton, we need more job lands in the Washington County area, that's, it's critical. We have the mayor of, we have the mayor of Portland arguing that there's plenty of land available for industrial development within the city growth boundary, lands that are, that are poorly utilized. We had our Clackamas Commissioner Representative, Lehane, saying, if we spread, if we spread our land base into industrial areas in the Washington County area and so forth, we're going to be taking it from agricultural industry. And you even had our, the Metro Council, not our rep, but Metro Council rep that covers part of Clackamas County, Representative Parks, saying, he wished that the report that was given did not focus on land expansion and land needs, you should talk about job capacity through the whole area. These are the kinds of arguments that have existed in, in the areas that have, that have been argued for some time, those kinds of jurisdictional interests in mind. The point is that we have certain, we have certain counties that are job-rich, and actually have a majority of the people, well, a majority, a large portion of the people are coming out from the other counties into these areas. The one county in which the, the jobs housing ratio is lower than one is Clackamas County. Our people are going to other places to work, and that's one of the things I hope we focus on in our aspiration, city aspiration discussion. These are aspirations, the cities are putting forward in, in terms of looking at the rural and urban reserves, and I think it's critical we proceed as well.
Okay, Commissioner West.
Do you have something, Maggie?
Go ahead.
It's not a report, but.
Oh.
Go ahead.
My paper's here. I have been busy the last week, and last Thursday Larry Patterson and I went to a meeting at the county for, it was a climate solutions business briefing, and I don't remember the groups, the group's name that was there, but they really went over the governor's agenda for climate change, there was a lot about that. So, and they, I think they were either looking for individual commissioners to sign up, cities or mayors to sign on to their agenda, firming it. But the one thing that was, I thought, to take home for Oregon City was a sidebar conversation I had with Susan Zolko, the Director of Sustainability for the county, and she was saying that they'll probably, or they're looking to get some economic stimulus money for weatherization projects. So first I was thinking homeowners, and, but it might be able to translate over for us on Main Street with windows and improvements down there, too. So that was one. Then, after that, I went to the Main Street Conference in Chicago for the last four days, and we just had a great time, very informational, and I really want to thank my commissioners here for supporting the funds for me to go, because I really think it's, it's gonna translate into dollars for the community. The attendance at the Main Street Convention, there was about 1,200 people there, which was double of last year, and they were kind of saying why, that the troubles on Wall Street were not necessarily transformed, or carrying over to Main Street, because Main Street is really about rejuvenating or revitalizing a lot of small businesses. It's just been, it's, it's a kind of a grassroots, and a return to basic values is why I think some of the popularity of the Main Street program nationwide. And it's like we can't control some of the things that are happening in corporate America, but we can do what we can, or every, excuse me, everything possible to help in our own community. So I wanted to tell you about some of the breakout sessions I'd been to, because I thought they had some applications for Oregon City, too. Main Streets often have farmers markets on them, because they want to increase traffic counts and, and people circulating in their downtown area, shoppers, that kind of thing. And there's a lot of tools available for us to use from farmer market groups to work on that. And I, we, our Main Street had previously written a letter to our farmers market, asking them to consider moving downtown Oregon City, and one of the real big, well, there's a lot of pluses, but one of the pluses is if we can get them located by mass transit, there's federal money available. As the gentleman that was just here talking about government money for WIC, there's a lot of money available to make those who don't have the capacity to get to a farmers market and have lower, that have lower income and can't get fresh fruits and vegetables. So that was encouraging. Another conference I was at was called Gateway to Gateway, the Importance of Corridors, and this was, believe it or not, a lot about signage. And so Nancy, this was for you, that it sounded like there was going to be some new DOT regulations, what do they call it, MUTDC? MUTCD. MUT, okay, got it wrong, on wayfinding signs. So that was interesting. We also, and I had not anywhere else learned about form-based code, we don't work that way in Oregon City, so that was kind of interesting. Another zoning and planning meeting that I had gone to was from the Lakota Group, who is our consultant for the Main Street program, and they're gonna do a lot of training here in Oregon. And when they introduced the speaker, they were talking, and they were, you know, giving a little background on him, and they said, well, he works for Scotch, or he was Greek, and he'd take food. So I said, hey, when you come to Oregon next week, we've got just the two places for you, with Cypress and the Highland Steel House. They do Scotch in a big way. So we were just having fun. But anyway, so this group is coming, the Lakota Group, to Merrillhurst on Friday and Saturday to do training, so I don't know if any of the staff want to go, or, well, any other Main Streeters are welcome to go. But they had a very interesting presentation on how to keep undesirable businesses out of your downtown area. They were talking about things like adult, huh? Well, yeah, the adult, you know, businesses, but they were also talking about formula or chain stores, things like, things like that. And it was also fun to hear them talk about all the good things, you know, they used a lot of Oregon cases for land use, because usually sitting up here at commission, I'm hearing about how terrible Oregon land use is, so it's kind of fun to go somewhere else and be put up on the board for your system. They had another breakout on how to avoid business displacement, or, you know, which is a big concern of, in this economy with businesses closing. And this is where we got into a bunch of funding sources from Urban Renewal. And consistently, in a lot of the committees, they were using Urban Renewal funds for signs, which we do not do, and for ADA handicap accessibility, they were citing an example where one building couldn't afford to put in an elevator. building couldn't afford to put in an elevator, so they went in the back and they connected it somehow between about three buildings, so they displaced the cost. Uh, we do facade grants. Another thing I had heard them talk about urban renewal, and I had never heard of it used for, was they were saying to write down leasing costs for a business. So, let's say you own a, you have a property down there and you want a new business to come in, you, you'd have an incentive such as a two-year contract, but then at the end of the two years, urban renewal would, uh, could perhaps give some of that money back. They, very creative financing thing. So, um, I would recommend going to, if anybody can, to go to the Lakota Group at Merrillhurst next week. Another thing that was pertinent, I thought, to our discussion was the lectures on cultural tourism. And Rocky certainly knows this, he's been involved with many, um, heritage, uh, partners in our community. And, uh, it's really, I thought it was also a timely and important event with the problems that Clackamas Heritage Partners is having now. But the thing, the statistic they like to quote was, "Cultural tourists stay longer and spend more." I think I've heard Mayor Norris say that, but it's really a big component in revitalizing your downtown. So, uh, as we make budgetary decisions this, um, spring, I'm sure that'll be in it. Another, um, typical Main Streets, they were saying in general, were, their funding sources were a third from public, uh, public entities, a third from stakeholders, that, you know, their businesses in the downtown, and a third from earned income from events and sponsorships or if you sell, you know, Main Street, Oregon City merchandise. So, of the one-third public funding, I went to, Dawn Slack, Rob Crocker, and myself went to a, a session on forming the bids. And that was really interesting, too. I didn't realize all the ways you can do them from, uh, from buildings to businesses to vacant lots to parking structures. They had, uh, rates that you could, all over the map, so, and a way to, um, they were using it, uh, taxing, um, or claiming a fee on empty lots to, so here you'd be paying your fee, a business or a property owner would be paying a fee on a vacant lot, so the idea would be to encourage it to be developed. Last thing I thought of Rocky again, on this one, was on volunteer, they, we had, they had an excellent speaker talking on volunteerism. And, uh, I always think it's the social research on, um, on ages is interesting, from the baby boomers to the Gen Xers and to the millennials, which are 1982 to 2001, uh, which I would refer to as my children. But, um, Rocky has said this when he came on to commission, and that is, they were saying the biggest opportunities in volunteers, uh, really coming up will be the millennials. And, uh, so to really start rethinking your programs in terms of youth. The other biggest opportunity, they said, and we have not really, uh, worked out partnerships within the community, is with corporate volunteers, so, um, a lot of bigger offices send volunteers to events, since we're planning so many big events at Main Street. In fact, um, all, just here for, uh, an idea for, one of the first ones coming up is the, trying to make a problem into an oppor, not an opportunity, but to get the best out of it is the Arch Bridge closure, so we're planning some kind of event on the bridge. We just haven't figured out how to get, uh, Father John McLaughlin in, in on this one for that night to...
Why didn't you just ask him?
Because, you know, we're going to not have cars, so we've got to figure out a way. Maybe Doug will have ideas. The, the volunteer...
Just dig them up.
Yeah.
Don't we have laws against that?
The National Volunteer of the Year Award went to Mary Oberst, First Lady of Oregon, uh, for, uh, yes, of Oregon, for her starting the whole proj, or the whole Main Street thing in Oregon. It's only been a year. And, uh, she had a cute story of her asking, "So, honey, can I just have a little budget for this?" She's a very cute speaker, and he said, "Yes, I'll give it to you this time, but then we, uh, you need your own lobbyists to get it back." So, we need Main Street results, that's what we're all about, less vacancies, more, higher property values, that kind of thing, so. And, um, the last thing I, I wanted to tell you about that I served on is the League of Oregon Cities were working on their conference for in fall, and were working on training and concurrent sessions, just like the kinds that I attended, too. So, that was fun. We got a lot of, uh, material for that, but, um, Mayor Norris and I were at the league last year, and we came home with a binder about this thick, and I had to tell you, this whole conference was paperless. So, um, we'll see where we go with that.
The thick binder was rather useless, too.
Yes. Uh, so the question on the telephone when we talked about the binders is, uh, because that came up last year, those binders, is somebody said, "Well, where, where are you going to, what are you going to do with that binder?" And somebody else said, "Well, put it on the shelf with the rest." So, unfortunately, some, sometimes that happens. So, anyway, maybe at a, an upcoming work session, we could talk about bids maybe a little bit and, uh, and maybe focus our urban renewal on, um, all kinds of ways we could maybe use it if we can get some business in there to pay the increment. So, I've talked quite a bit tonight. Uh, but at the end of the day, so this is personal now, switching, not professional, just personal, it was very fun to be in the Midwest again, and, um, all the holiday, uh, it was St. Pat's in a big way in Chicago, and now we have another Midwesterner here on our council, and you know, wow, they do it up big. We had corned beef for breakfast, dinner, and breakfast, lunch, and dinner, so I so appreciated the chef doing it tonight, but, um, I even found out, I even found out that, um, someone we know is going to Ireland to dance for, um, do some Celtic dance. Aren't you?
I'm not going to Ireland.
You're going on a, I was hearing, uh, from another planet that you were, so, anyway, we missed that, that you were going to do some Celtic dancing.
Yeah.
Food is a good way to share, um, our cultures and, um, our ethnicity, so, thank you for your listening to me tonight.
Thank you.
From what, from what you were saying, you were suggesting maybe to have a work session, I think, uh, I don't think we, I think it'd be a real big benefit having work session of the Urban Renewal Agency Board, and that's probably what you were talking about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
Couple, uh, comments. First of all, I was at the, um, Oregon City Heritage Coordinating Council meeting, which is a similar group to, uh, the CHP, um, in that it coordinates, um, heritage events and with multiple entities, um, within the city. And the conversation of the CHP came up in, in the sense that we were all kind of disappointed and surprised by, um, the closure or coming closure of some of the museums. Um, and we know that the public is pretty aware of this, I think, through the press, um, but we wanted to make it very clear that there are museums still open, and, um, the McLaughlin House, especially one that people can still visit. Um, and the Erma Tinger House, which is the steelhouse, is still, um, um, open. I don't really know what their schedule is, but you can check that out.
I have an reservation.
Um, and the, um, second Saturday of every month, the Erma Tinger House is hosting events. So, there are activities in, um, other heritage sites that can be visited, um, while the CHP sites are closed, hopefully temporarily. Um, so that's the first thing. The second thing is, um, as part of the OC 150 group, um, and as part of this commission, we've all been pretty vocal about the need to support, um, all the events and all the, um, entities in, in the city that are, um, open to the public and, um, visiting and doing all the Oregon City 150 things. And so, I want to issue a challenge to the commissioners to see which of us can complete the most of the list of 150 things by the end of the summer. So, I'm going to issue that challenge to all of you, and I think you should take your folder and keep it with you and check them off as we go, and we can maybe update each other periodically, but, um, I'm pretty sure that I can do a good majority of them.
I only have three left to go.
Let's see it, let's see it, roll up your sleeves, she's got... I want to see the tattoo.
I won't show. No, no. Rocky, I do have a question. Do we have to do them in the year 2009, or things we've done in the past count?
No, I think, I think we have to do it this year, so you have to redo it.
Okay, so, starting January 1, or February 14th? Got to have the rules.
Claire says February 14th. I'm going to go with her.
February 14th. February 14th.
Okay.
And that is the 2009.
And I think the city manager should be a part of this, too.
He doesn't have time. I want him working on our behalf, not out gallivanting and doing 150 things.
Does everyone agree to that?
Sure.
Thank you.
You betcha. So, uh, well, wait a minute, what's the prize?
I'll co, I don't know.
Yeah, what do we get?
Money?
Trip to Hawaii.
Ooh, I like it. I worked really hard.
I'll come up with a prize.
Okay.
And actually, a lot of, a lot of the shipping traffic back then, actually, came through Hawaii after here. Yeah, that's appropriate.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Nocita?
Um, before I talk about, um, my topics, I first want to acknowledge to Chief Conrad that I, I, I fully recognize that when you were talking about long-winded commissioners, you were talking about me.
Tonight, tonight, it could've been, it could be between you and Daphne.
Tonight, I win, but not a, not a typical...
Okay, I have a couple items. Um, first, as I've shared with my fellow commissioners and a few other folks, um, yesterday I, I turned myself in. Um, I discovered, um, to my chagrin and astonishment that, uh, the Oregon City Business License applied to me, and on further investigation, I, I discovered that I hadn't paid it. So, um, I, um, I went and paid my, um, uh, business license fee yesterday, and, um, I just want to say how, uh, how gratified I am to, uh, to give Colin mine or something to write about. Um, I did hear a rumor that there was, um, some other attorney that, uh, might not have paid a business license fee also, um, but I won't, I won't...
You mean Commissioner?
No.
An attorney?
Yeah, but that's, 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 shh, that's hush. Secondly, I, uh, on Sunday, I attended, uh, an organization, uh, a, a meeting at the Prince of Life Lutheran Church, um, in, on Myers Road. They have a program called Backpack Buddies, and it's a, it's, um, it's, it's a program where people make donations, and in the program, they provide backpacks with food in it to give to, uh, uh, children in need. And I was really taken aback at the fact, uh, that we have a fairly prevalent problem of, um, uh, children in Oregon City, um, that are, for the most part, going hungry. And that doesn't get discussed a lot in the media, for example, but, um, um, going to this event really opened my eyes to the issue, and I just wanted to, um, first recommend this program to folks. Um, you can call Prince of Life Lutheran Church and, and get hooked into the program if you're interested in making a donation. And, um, I'd also, um, uh, like to thank the folks that, that extended the invitation, and to say that I think we really, um, in this time of deep recession, have to, you know, really think out, outside of the box on how we, how we do things, um, in recognition of those less fortunate in the community. Third, like, thing I'd like to talk about is, um, uh, Mayor Norris appointed me to the Clackamas Heritage Partners as the city's liaison to CHP, and I attended my first meeting of that, um, uh, organization on the very day they, um, uh, decided to, um, basically shut down their operations, which...
Alice, I told you you should have appointed Rocky.
That wouldn't have helped. But, um, as you all might imagine, the, um, the atmosphere was pretty dour, um, and he, I would even say bitter amongst some of the people, uh, on the board of that organization. One gentleman actually, um, I didn't know his name because I didn't know most of the board members, actually stood up and, and was, um, um, making a, a statement to the effect that, um, the county and the city had encouraged Clackamas Heritage Partners to spend $300,000 on the proposed funicular tram project, um, that they call the overlook or the, um...
Ariel's County.
Yeah. And he said, "If we hadn't spent that $300,000, we wouldn't be in the position we're in today." And it just made my head shake a little bit, and it sounds like a accountability issue there.
Yeah.
Especially if we're being asked, um, uh, at the city to, you know, uh, expend money on their behalf. I think, um, it's, it's an interesting, um, issue to come up. Um, and the last thing I have...
Let's, let's correct that statement, though, right away, because we don't, we didn't, I don't think, we don't have any culpability in encouraging them to spend that.
No, that, that idea was discussed. That idea was brought up to the city by representatives of CHP. Uh, we indicated that, you know, we would look to be supportive in that. Uh, to that end, we did purchase a couple of homes through Urban Renewal on, uh, Tumwater, because again, if, if that project went forward, you're going to have to address things like parking and traffic flow, and those two houses posed an issue in there. And we did put money in the urban renewal, uh, program in case that project materialized that we could be of, of help, even though if you look in the urban renewal program, what we discussed, that would be down the road at some point before we got in that. That was an initiative of CHP, not of the city or anyone else.
I'm just playing reporter.
Yeah, no, I know, but it's, but it's important, I think, to, to make sure that we share accurate information.
Okay. Um, the last thing on my agenda is, um, Mr. Edgar's, um, communication requesting that he be granted a fee waiver under our code and be allowed to, um, um, argue his appeal of the, of the Cove Project. Um, I've shared an email with staff and with the commissioners, um, um, saying that after having, giving it a lot of thought, um, I, I supported his request, and I want to share some of those, uh, reasons again, um, for the public also. I'm, by profession, a very low-paid, public-interest, environmental and land-use attorney, and I kind of, as a, just, you know, a matter of personality and, and conviction, think everybody should have their day in court. And, um, um, taking a look at our code, I, and our, our fee structure, I just think that having, requiring an individual to pay over $3,000 plus attorney's fees to, um, you know, appeal a decision of the planning commission to the city commission is, 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 is too onerous, um, a fee. And I'd like to review that whole, um, ordinance and fee structure, um, as we go through our, um, code revision process. In this particular case, um, I made the point that ODOT has already appealed the project, um, and so they've paid the fee. And, um, you know, if we asked, I, I gave an example of if 10 people were to have appealed this project, would we really collect about $31,000 to have this appeal proceed, you know, charging all of those 10 people, um, 3,100 bucks? I certainly acknowledge, um, City Manager Patterson's, um, concerns. I mean, this, I mean, things are looking more and more grim, um, on this issue. And I, but even, even given that, I mean, there's a balance of priorities, and, um, one of my priorities is, again, public participation and letting people have their, have their, um, make their case. What else did I want to say on this? Um, the, you know, the extra cost of, of, of this appeal, there will be, there would be new issues presented, um, but, you know, it's, I mean, again, as a theoretical matter, you could have, you know, one petitioner pay the fee, and then, you know, all the people who had issues just have that one person, you know, make all of the arguments, and that you would, you know, you would still have one fee payment and multiple issues There is an issue with, um, if you're going to waive the fee for Mr. Edgar, why not waive the fee for ODOT? And I acknowledge that's a complexity as well. Um, but I do think there's a difference between an individual and taxpayer of the city of Oregon City and, you know, a government entity, um, or someone from outside the city who doesn't already pay taxes to, um, hire staff and hire a city attorney. So, based on, on those kind of central points, um, I, I did, um, suggest to my colleagues that I found the, um, the request meritorious, but I do want to hear from my colleagues... to hear from my colleagues on how they feel, and I also want to hear from the city manager and Mr. Sullivan also.
Go respond.
Let me, I'll take it from a budget, and I'll give you a second opinion on maybe a philosophical look at it. And then I'll let Mr. Sullivan talk about the legal aspects of it. From a budget point of view, again, the fees are based on an estimate of what our costs are going to be, and very seldom do they cover the cost of what it costs us to deal with the pill. That's one reason why you're looking at such a subsidy in that area. And the more we get into things that create appeals, the higher those costs continue to go. So, you get into an interesting question here, and again, I will, I guess I always cringe when I hear waive fees, because again, if this is a true cost, and I believe that it is, you don't waive it. Somebody else pays it. And in this case, what is really being asked is from Mr. Edgar, is that the city, other citizens, pay the cost of his appeal. And if you think about that philosophically, if I am in favor of the Cove and I'm a taxpayer, I'm helping him pay a fee to fight an issue that I disagree with him on. And so therefore, that's an interesting position and that you get into. So, but the bottom line for you is you're going to have to take money out of the general fund and subsidize this fee. You don't waive it. Basically, you're being asked to pay the fee.
Mr. Sullivan?
Oregon law requires that the, either the actual or average cost of an appeal can be levied against a, an appellant or an applicant. And those members who were on the commission at the time may recall the Walmart appeal about four or five years ago, where I'm not sure what the fee paid was, but it paled in comparison to the staff and attorney and other time that was spent while the matter was before the commission, and then certainly on appeal. Of course, you choose to appear in the appeal or not, but it was a considerable amount of money, well, very well over by a magnitude of three or four or five to one that the city spent on processing the application. As a result of that case, the staff talked with the commission about having a two-tiered process for dealing with applications. In the main, most applications were dealt with on the fee average. Mr. Drenlaw comes back to the commission on an annual basis with the figures as to what it takes to process a conditional use permit, a subdivision, et cetera. And from that, he recommends what the average cost of those processes are. And the commission, on a fairly regular basis, sets a fee schedule by resolution at every time that the planning director makes that recommendation, and usually follows that recommendation. However, the commission, several years ago, made one additional change to the code, which says that the planning director may, in certain cases where it is anticipated that there will be an awful lot of staff time expended, may designate that application as one in which the actual costs will be levied. And the planning director, as I understand it in this case, designated this case as one in which we would recover our actual costs. It would skew the whole of the figures that are necessary for processing applications if we were to throw that into the mix. This is a lawful way of dealing with certain big-ticket applications, and that what was, that was what was done in this case. So, the actual cost was assessed in this case, and the actual cost for an appeal was also assessed. We had to look ODOT in the eye and tell them that they had to pay this amount of money, and it was a significant amount of money, and also promised to pay the actual cost of additional processing. That's for me, that's for staff, to get through the city process. Doesn't take into consideration any appeal to Luba or the Court of Appeals. That, too, is lawful. I don't know enough about Mr. Edgar's issues on the appeal, but ODOT made the appeal. It is a live appeal. It is an appeal that, if it goes forward, and that's not clear right now whether ODOT will go forward with the appeal, will allow everybody who participated before the Planning Commission to participate in the appeal. However, the downside of not filing your own appeal is that you are limited in terms of the issues that can be raised before the commission to those which were raised in the appeal. It's not an all-comers, you know, come up to the microphone and raise any issue you want. You lose control when you don't appeal, and you hope that ODOT has raised your issue for you, and if you don't, it is not before the commission. Okay? Even with that, in this case, I think we're arguing a moot issue, because in order to get the fee waiver, there had to be an appeal filed on time or a request acted upon by the commission before the expiration of the appeal period. So, this is not truly before you, under our code. If you want to change the code, you can do so. But that's the policy that the City Commission previously has adopted.
Thank you. Commissioner Neely?
I don't know to what degree the, the appeal that Mr. Edgar was putting forward was a neighborhood association appeal.
It wasn't.
I believe, well, I'm...
Oh, sorry.
But, I believe that neighborhood associations granted a waiver on the appeal fees, but I think there's a specific process that the neighborhood associations have to go through in that appeal process. I'm sure filing on time is just one of them. And I think, just for clarification, I would perhaps like Mr. Drenlaw to go ahead and address, and perhaps the attorney, too, to address what, what the mechanisms are. Now, I'm going to have another comment.
I probably want to review the code in some detail, but I know two of the important items is you have to file the appeal on time, which was last Friday in this case. You have to have a duly noticed neighborhood meeting where the action is brought before the neighborhood and action taken by the neighborhood. So, an individual, it doesn't work.
That's right.
But a neighborhood organization, it does, and that was the, that was really the main, the main issue here on this, this particular case.
I would, a couple of things I want to mention. We would not, never want to put ourselves in a position that we're going to present an appeal on behalf of an individual citizen. I doubt if there's any issue that goes to the Planning Commission in which there's not opposition. And you'd be opening a Pandora's Box if you were going to start waiving fees, because I think almost, I think you'll find active opposition to any of those planning commission decisions, and you'd be flooded. I will tell you, before we set up our type one, type two, type three, and so forth criteria, the City Commission was hearing case after case after case because we were required to. And the meetings went many times until 2:00 AM in the morning here, after the Planning Commission had devoted countless hours to those specific issues. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to go there again, and that's what you're asking to do, really. You're, you're probably, if you're doing that, you might as well make the City Commission responsible for most of the major land use decisions that are going on in the city. I mean, we've, we changed that so that doesn't happen. Having said that, I'm going to make a big however statement. I think the Cove Project, from the city's commission standpoint, is a different situation. And I'm not putting forward in terms of the decisions that have been made on phase one and phase two, but we're talking about lands that are owned by a city or an agency that was created by the city. And I would actually like to review every one of those after they come out of the Planning Commission for the Cove development, because these are city properties. And we are ultimately the ones that are responsible for that. It has nothing to do with the, the appeal that's before us. For one thing, it's mostly on, on non-city property, although the city will be involved in certain ways in terms of, of the Main Street extension and so forth. But when it comes to the area along the, along the, along the Cove itself, I'd like the, I'd like the city to be in a position to review every one of the Planning Commission's decisions, simply because we are dealing with city-owned land and putting that forward at this particular time.
I don't think I understand. You're just, you're asking for a formal, official review, where we look at documents in an official meeting?
That's right. I'm actually, I'm actually asking for the kind of review that we would, that would normally be done on an appeal basis, but we would be taking a look at the, at the overall decision made by the Planning Commission on the city-owned property.
With the end result being...
We review them.
What happens at the end of the review?
Well, it depends on whether we want to put additional conditions on them or not.
Is that possible?
Oh, sure.
I think I read something in Chapter 227 that gives the City Commission...
Yeah, we can call any, we can call any planning decision if...
Our own, we have the power to review a decision of the Planning Commission.
Yeah, we have that power.
In the case of the Cove, several, a lot of those more detailed site plans that come in as the phases go through the process are, are planning staff decisions, so...
Yeah.
They're administrative decisions, so you...
So, is this our only opportunity?
Well, you have an opportunity as an urban renewal board to review.
Not, not land use issues, though?
I have to go to our attorney here.
It'd be nice to ask him.
Let's get into that. Can we do this?
I wrote the provision that allows the city council, City Commission, to call up a decision of an inferior body. I think you have the power to do that. The only thing I regret about writing it is that I did not put in any time limitation for doing so. There is an argument, and I would fight the argument if you were to decide to take the matter up on your own, that the decision of the City Commission to call up the decision of the Planning Commission or any other inferior body is limited to the time that an appellant had. I think the statutes were written, at least is my thought, and my thought doesn't matter, was that the City Commission retained the power of the jurisdiction to hear a decision of an inferior body. That is your choice to make. And again, I will defend whatever decision you make in the matter. I will tell you that it is not, not free from doubt that you can do so after the appeal period has run. I just want you to know that.
So, if you have doubt about that, or, or, I don't know what legally that, that means.
Concern?
Yep, right. So, does that then extend to, I mean, I guess, this is new, new ground for me. So, if we were to do that then, and put, for instance, additional conditions on that decision, what, what grounds for, basis for adoption does that have? Is that solid? Or does it have appealability?
As I said, I don't think it's free from doubt.
Okay, but what's that mean?
Well, it means that somebody can challenge it, and somebody might win. Whether they would or not, I don't know. I think I could defend your decision, but I'm not, I'm not entirely sure of that.
Mr. Patterson?
Madam Mayor, that thing, too, and Mr. Sullivan could address this, if that is your pleasure, what I would suggest, as opposed to that process, on those issues, that you take the thing directly versus going to the Planning Commission...
Yeah.
And then to Urban Renewal, I mean, it's difficult enough to put a project together and get it going in the timeframe, plus the gauntlet of review. I think you're going to have a hard time encouraging some large developments, particularly if it's a public-private thing, if you're going to run it through that. So, if you really want to do that, I think you ought to just take those directly to the City Commission and bypass the Planning Commission, at least a step in that process, but...
I, I, from the standpoint of frankly, expertise that's been developed to the Planning Commission, I'd oppose that. And the, don't misunderstand me, I'm, from my standpoint, I'm not asking a review of every decision the Planning Commission makes. I'm talking about strictly the Cove Project, and I'm not talking about the Phase One that we're dealing with.
I understand that.
And the point, the point is, those, those are such, those are such important projects, and they also involve, which most projects do, a tremendous expenditure of city funds.
Urban mill funds.
Well, the, they're urban renewal funds, I understand that, but there's, there's still tax, tax revenues that we collect from cities, that are collected from the city's citizens. And, and I'm looking at that specific case there, where in fact, currently, the city owns some of the properties involved, as well as the Urban Renewal Agency. And so I'm not asking for a, a broad review of every land use action that's going to be coming from the Planning Commission. I'm talking specifically about the Cove Project.
My only point is, if you're looking at it from a developer's perspective, which time is of essence, and I think that was kind of underscored today.
Mm-hmm.
They're looking at a review by the Planning Commission, the Urban Mill Commission, and now we're going to add the City Commission step, and we hadn't even got to the appeal process. You can do that, but I think you may have a bigger difficulty finding somebody who wants to work through that gauntlet. But again, wherever the commission wants to go, we'll salute and march down that road.
Some of the conditions that were laid down, I, I thought could have been approved upon, and that, that's, I mean, and so...
Possibly so.
Yeah, so...
But that's the thing, I mean, you've got five, 10, five, I mean, you've got 20 people, and everybody's going to have a different opinion. And we heard that at Planning Commission, you heard some at the Urban Hill Commission, and we're going to add more thinking. It just makes it more difficult to put projects together, and you might want to factor that in of whether you really want to add that level. But you can do that.
Commissioner Nocita?
I want to get back to Mr. Edgar's appeal. And, Mr. Sullivan, I wanted to ask you about something you stated about this not being before us at this time.
If you're looking at an appeal by Mr. Edgar, Mr. Edgar has not filed an appeal, and therefore you have nothing before you. The only way that you can get other issues before you is for you to call it up. You have no jurisdiction to, to take on Mr. Edgar's appeal.
But my, my question to you is, Mr. Edgar, from his communications to me, made a good faith attempt to file the appeal.
That's not good enough. That's not good enough. It has to be filed on time, and if it's not filed on time, intentions don't matter.
The way I read the code, that he didn't file on time because he didn't submit $3,100.
He didn't file an appeal either.
But...
He didn't file an appeal. There is nothing before you.
Okay. Without many...
There.
Okay.
I've got a discussion.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think we have some items that we can talk about.
My, my request, actually, I would like to actually put it forward for a decision item.
Work session?
Yeah, within a reasonable period of time. I mean, Phase One, Phase Two, this has basically been approved. I'm not, I'm not that concerned about that. I am concerned about subsequent phases where the buildings will be occurring on taxpayer-supported properties.
Yeah, let's put that on something for the next...
Right now, let me make sure that, then, the, the ODOT appeal has been noticed for next meeting, right?
For next meeting.
Yeah.
And the notice says, as I would imagine, that the issues are limited to those in the ODOT appeal.
Yes.
If you want to change that, you're going to have to give new notice and get ready for a new hearing.
And what, but what you're asking for is some type of action from the City Commission that says that on your own volition, you can call up those type of issues where it is city-owned property.
Actually, I want, I want an automatic, I want a automatic call-up on the Cove properties for review by the commission.
The better way to handle that in the absence of a code provision requiring that is to ask the director to give you notice in a timely way so that you can call it up.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
And I, as I indicated to folks today, too, that late this afternoon, we did get notice that Kaiser had withdrawn. So, there's a question whether we have a Cove project at this point. I think it also raises an interest... I think it also raises an interesting question about what position we want to take now with the ODOT appeal, which we were trying to find some common ground there with ODOT. But now it's really a question if that project gets redesigned, as there may be a greater importance that we reconsider as opposed to just work to come out, because we may want to look at that road differently.
And it's a different project, and it has to go through the process again.
Yep.
Yeah. So if you have additional information by tomorrow evening, I'm sure you'll share it.
If. I think, right now, everyone stepped back for a few days and looked at things because, and this is a timing issue, this thing I'm talking about. I mean, in economic development, if you really want economic development, when the opportunity is there, you have to shut the deal. The longer you leave it open, the greater chance of it going sideways, and I think we saw that today.
Yeah, that's an unfortunate loss.
Very.
Okay, any other reports, then? All right, we are adjourned.